It's in your blood. And so I want to continue to give back. And I still have a little spit and fire left in me. So I joined the team of executive searches for the Illinois Association of School Boards, and I'm having a wonderful time and working with some wonderful colleagues, all of whom are retired superintendents. And so I want to share a little bit about the Illinois Association of School Boards with you. We have a very strong impact in Illinois because we concentrate, for the most part, in the state of Illinois, being an arm of the Illinois Association of School Boards. You are members of the Illinois Association of School Boards, so your membership dues actually help to keep the search costs very low and very efficiently. So that's important that I wanted to highlight for you. So our associates have 60 years of executive experience, 300 years of combined consultant experience. We have a very strong network. I know many of the superintendents across the state, and many of our consultants have concentration in various areas in the state. I'm focusing more on the northern part of the state. And so it's a foundational principle that the Illinois Association has that your first and foremost job responsibility is to employ the superintendent. And it's probably one of the most important decisions that you will make. Thank you so much. So we are the only organization that you will find if you look at other organizations. They provide services in other areas, but our primary goal is to serve the boards of education in Illinois public schools. But we also have touchpoints across the nation. And so near 20% of our candidates also come from across the United States. We're an active participant with the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, and it's a nationwide organization that we are a member of, and the position would be posted through that association as well. So what we do is we network. That's one of our strengths. We network with IASA, which many of our superintendents, I would say most all superintendents in Illinois, are a member of, as well as cabinet-level administrators. The Illinois School Business Official Organization is another organization that we work closely with. The Illinois Principal Association and other organizations. We also conduct professional advancement seminars. As a matter of fact, we've got one coming up in September, seeking the superintendency, of which we have quite a few potential candidates that attend that seminar. Again, I mentioned the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searches, and also the National Association of Superintendents, Job Central, is another place that we connect with. The other unique part of what we offer is that we currently have over 7,000 networking touchpoints, I would call them. So whenever our information, our posting is put out, it is pushed out to over 7,000 individuals. And so those individuals have requested to receive the information, and so we cast a very wide net across the state. Just to highlight a few of the organizations that I already mentioned to you. Next slide. So I want to go through the steps, and you have, I'll give you these folders in a minute of what the search process with the Illinois Association of School Boards is like. So I want to mention the standard search fee. That's $8,400. And we set our search fee based upon enrollment. So based upon the size of your district, that is how that base is set. And that base includes everything that I'm going to speak to you about, except three options. There are no additional invoices for mileage. There are no additional invoices for materials or supplies or anything like that. There are no additional expenses. So the total would be determined by whether or not you select any of those options, and I'll share those with you. So you would have a dedicated search consultant, AKA Carmen Ayala. I would be your lead partner in the search process. And I would have a co-facilitator. And the co-facilitator that I work with is Mr. Al Mosby, former superintendent, has been with the association and doing searches for the past nine years. We would take a look at the search components. We would work on characteristics that you're looking for in terms of the next leader in your district, and we would collectively put together a timeline of all the dates, all the benchmarks that we want to hit to make sure that everything is running as smoothly as possible. We administer surveys. So one of the first things that we would do is have a survey that you would push out to your community, to your staff, you as board members. Everyone who you consider a stakeholder would get the survey, and we would collect that information for you. I would come back at another open board meeting and provide you with the results of that survey. Here comes the first option. The first option, oops, let's go back. That's okay. The first option would be to conduct some focus groups. Last night, I was in another district conducting some focus groups and asking staff and parents and community what they're looking for in their next superintendent. And so that feedback is collected, the survey feedback is collected, and that is what I bring back to you in a summary form. And that is also what helps to formulate the trifold that we would be putting together for you. So I'm going to give these out to you now, so we can take a look at a few of them. So we would articulate the ideal candidate profile, and there is a trifold that we would produce, very professionally done with your district's logo. It will have information about the district, such as enrollments, square miles, tax rate, information that a prospective superintendent would want to know about the district. And there would be a specific section that would describe what the ideal candidate would be. What are the characteristics that this board and this community is looking for in a superintendent? You would approve that. We would get that finalized, and it would be pushed out to all of our networks. So that's the announcement of vacancy. Once the position is posted, and when you sign a contract with us, we would post immediately on the Illinois Association of School Boards website and Job Bank. So until the survey is into play, and until possible focus groups take place, and then trifold is put together, it is posted. We want to hit the ground running and make sure that we capture as many candidates as possible. So the applications would come in, and we would screen those applications. And one of the very first things we do is verify the qualifications and licensure. We would not want to bring to you and go through the process to find out, uh-oh, he doesn't have an, or she doesn't have an Illinois license. So that's a very first step that we would take. The process for the applications, I sit with, not with, but we work together. I would review all of the applications. My colleague would review all of the applications. And then we would get together, and we would compare notes. I generally develop a spreadsheet, and I have all those characteristics down one side. And I literally will add column, a column for each candidate, and I would copy and paste their response in addressing what those characteristics. There are also some key questions that are in that trifold and in the application that the candidate would have to address. And so all of that is linked and aligned to address the characteristics that you have designated. So we analyze the applicants, and we look for a dozen or so. We then conduct some virtual screenings with the candidates, and we ask them questions, which then further narrows it, further narrows it to a slate of candidates that then we would come and bring back to you. That would be a meeting in closed session, because we will be discussing candidates, and we can't do that in public. One of the things that we would also do is conduct limited background inquiries. We're not the employer, so we wouldn't be able to conduct the kind of background check that you are able to conduct. But I do make reference calls, and even if they don't list their most current employer, I pick up the phone and I say, hey, what can you tell me about? We do have to have some care in that regard, because sometimes the applicants haven't disclosed that they are applying. And so we were very careful with that, and when we talk to the candidates, we ask them those kinds of questions. It's also a question on the application, if they have informed their current employer. So we finalize the slate of candidates. It's usually around six or seven, because that is what most boards would prefer. It's a full, almost a full few hours, full day of interviews. Sometimes they break it up into two evenings. Sometimes they'll take a full Saturday. There's a lot of different ways to schedule those in. We would schedule them for you. You tell us the dates and times. We would contact each of those candidates and put them in one of those time slots. Here's the next option. Some boards haven't gone through this process because they're new to the board, or they haven't had to find a superintendent for a period of time. And so we would offer a practice interview training session, where we would actually do a mock interview. I'd invite one of my colleagues. They would be the candidate, and you would get to ask the questions. We do provide questions for you. We do provide guidance for you, the do's and don'ts, what are no-no questions, if you will, and what would be questions in various categories that you can pull from. So that's an option, the practice interview. Regardless of whether you want to do the mock interview, I would provide you with the questions and the support that you need. Here is the third option. Once you go through your first interview, generally you'll narrow it down to the top two or three candidates. Many districts like to have stakeholder engagement with those two candidates, right? So we have focus groups. We can have parents. We can have administrators. We can have teachers or classified staff, however you wanted to engage your community in. And so we would have focus groups. And I would come in, depending upon the number of focus groups. If we need another consultant, that would be facilitated, and we would ask questions. You would get that feedback to help you then make your decision. One of the things that we also offer, which is part of your membership to the Illinois Association of School Boards, but we offer this at no fee, is a board superintendent workshop. When I became a superintendent, the school board had used the Illinois Association of School Boards. And after I came on board, I think it was, let's see, I came on board July. By September, we were having our Starting Off on the Right Track workshop. And it's really a very great workshop, because it takes you through what are the roles of the superintendent, the role of the board, what are the board's expectations of the superintendent, and vice versa. And through that workshop, you develop agreements. Is the superintendent expected to be contacted after normal business hours, our weekends, on the table, off the table? How frequently do you want an update from the superintendent? How do you want to receive your board materials? It's all of those details of how you're going to work together as a team. And so that's something that is very, very beneficial. So you have that to schedule once your superintendent is in place. So the three options, gathering the upfront stakeholder feedback, and it's $1,500 per consultant per day. The interview, mock interview, and the professional development, if you will, of conducting the interview, that's usually a couple of hours. That's 1,500. And then the other one are the stakeholder groups with the semifinalists, and that again is $1,500 per consultant per day. So if you take the base, what you would add, if you took all three, one consultant each time, add another $4,500. We recommend the first one, the upfront, and the last one, the stakeholder impact to inform the final decision. There is another step that can be taken before you make a final decision, and that is a site visit. Some places do this, other places don't. It just kind of depends. I will share that when I was going through the process, generally it's two board members, right? No more than two board members can be discussing business before it becomes an Open Meetings Act kind of situation. Well, when I was being looked at to be a superintendent of this district, I had four, five board members do a site visit, and they couldn't even come together in the same car. And we had to be very careful in those kinds of things. I share that with you to say that where there's a will, there's a way, and we will work with you to make sure that everything is done in the appropriate way, right? But site visits are great, because you get to look under the hood, if you will. They met with the people that I supervised. They met with the superintendent that I worked with. They asked all the questions that they wanted to ask. They walked into my office to see if I had a mess, or if I had cleaned it up. Luckily, I had cleaned it up. And so they get a real sense for what leadership vibe you have by being in your current environment, if you will. And so as much as I can, I encourage it, because I think it really does make a difference. Not required, just something that can be done with boards. So I'm going to go over what is in the folder. On the right-hand side, left-hand side, sorry. I was an old kindergarten teacher, so I always say my right is my left, because you know, when you're facing them, you say, raise your right hand. But I'm raising my left, right? Executive searches, just a little bit about us, the national organization that we're a member of. Just information about your benefits. Some FAQs about executive searches. And something to highlight is, in Illinois, for the last over 20 years, we have been in 83 different counties in Illinois. Illinois, I believe, has 102 counties, and that represents 656 school districts. So you won't get another search firm. We are also not-for-profit. You won't get another search firm that has done, has this extensive experience across the state of Illinois. So that's just a little bit more of a commercial. But on the, we have a copy of the brochure. So this would fold. It would have your logo, your district logo. You would receive, once the contract is in place, you would receive a data sheet, data form, if you will, that would give us all the information on your EAV, on your budget, on your tax rate, on your different funds, describing the community. All of that information, we customize specific to the district. The ideal candidate, that area, comes from the feedback from the survey, and if you so choose, the focus groups. So you, we describe, and we pull out the most important characteristics. And again, this is brought back during the next board meeting, after we begin our work. You look at it, and we get your approval. It's good to go, and it gets distributed. Any questions so far?
Could you give me an understanding of the survey that's in the flat fee versus stakeholder input? Is those elicit the same information so as to save on cost? Can that achieve the same?
They can. I just did, as I said, the focus groups yesterday for a school district, and I did, some questions were very similar, because many times individuals who are selected to be a part of the focus group have already filled out the survey. So then this gives me an opportunity to just go a little deeper in terms of what they're looking for. The selection of the individuals, I like to use randoming, right? Random sample, but representative of the major groups in this district. So if we're doing a focus group of staff, for example, I would definitely want to see early childhood all the way to eighth grade represented. If you have a special education program, that one of those staff members represents specialty. If you have gifted, if you have EL, if you have specialists. So we want to make sure that we have representation of all the groups, but we would try to do it as randomly as possible. If you have three schools, we want to make sure we have representation from each building and so on. Parents, same thing. Random samples, but we want, we go through some of that random sampling. We want to make sure that we have parents from different groups, from special education, from early childhood, and different grade levels. Okay? So. This packet, it's a thick packet on your right side, after the letter to the board, president, has a much more detailed description of all of the steps, but I wanted to turn your attention to page six. Looks like this. This is a timeline that I would begin to work on with who your designated person is. That would be my contact. Usually I look for board meeting dates, so you don't have to have a lot of special board meetings. So I would look for a board meeting date, when we could come in to present to you the survey, and to present to you the tri, the quad folder, trifold information. There will be a need for special board meetings, and those are the interviews for the most part, the first round, the second round interviews. But everything else can pretty much be done during your normal meeting time. Some things in open, some things in closed session. When I bring the slate of candidates to you, that would have to be done during closed session. And so what happens there is, we would have the six or so candidates. You would get the full application, their reference letters, their letter of interest, and I would share with you any information that I had regarding that candidate, so that you would have some background information, but then you would also have all of the candidate's information that they submitted. Questions about the timeline or the process that we have? It's a lot of information, I know.
So I'm just looking, and one of the questions I was going to ask is if the board is just doing, sorry if I missed this, one round of interviews. It looks like on this timeline, it does have, board conducts two rounds of interviews.
Right. Remember, the first round is the six.
Right.
Then you narrow that down, and you come up with like two candidates, two, sometimes three, but most of the time it's two. Then you have a second round of interviews. Usually it's a longer, hour and a half or so. The first interview is probably about an hour, and then that second round with your top two or three is about an hour and a half, and you can go more in-depth. There may be something that they said during their first round interview that it sparked your interest, and you want to get more information. That would be the time that you would ask them those questions. During the first round particularly, one of the things that we share is that the questions should be asked, the same questions to each candidate, and that you don't dialogue in between the candidates, and you wait until you actually interview all six before you have conversation. And that's just good practice. And it really, if you're looking at question number three, you can look across and see what the responses are, and really pull out which ones stood out for you. And then when you have the second interview, when you narrow that down, you can go more
Thank you for that. On the optional focus groups, and we talked about potentially staff and parents and community members, I would say, would be maybe the third group of people. Is that one group of, are you combining those stakeholders into one group to conduct that?
Generally, we don't. And it depends on the size of the district, right? Even in a larger district, we've done administrative focus groups with the administrators. We usually do, like yesterday in the district I was in, it is a smaller district, we did classified and certified staff together, so teachers and support staff. We did one group together. But it doesn't have to be that way. You can do just teachers, or just classified staff, and then parents, obviously, or community. Some may have a focus group, interestingly, with the mayor, the chief of police, the fire chief. It just depends on your community and your relationships, and how much of that input you will want to make the characteristics of the superintendent. Even with the finalists, same thing. Other questions? I've given you a lot of material to read. This one's a good one, especially if you're having a hard time falling asleep. This one is the detailed steps of our process.
Um, Dr. Eli, I, yeah.
Carmen is fine.
Carmen. Um, we've heard that there's a, I, I just want to ask you a, a couple of questions on your impression of the market, the, the market, candidate market and the, uh, search market as it stands today. We've discussed, um, that potentially there's a big pool of jobs available right now, openings, that potentially the, the openings are posted earlier than they typically are, um, and potentially there might not be as many candidates, um, to fill those positions. So I just wanted to see what you think about that.
I will tell you that currently, the Illinois Association of School Boards, we have almost 20 openings right now to start the school year. And that is a little elevated than what we normally find for this time of year. I did a search this past spring. Now, spring is kind of late in the game, right? Because new superintendents starting July 1st, eh, it's really tight. Uh, and there were 72 applicants. Not all of them were vetted because some of those applicants didn't hit the submit button, right? There are about 20 that did not. So about 50 applicants. And great, great, good quality applicants. It really just depends. Depends on the district. It depends on, um, what an individual is looking for. Not only are you screening that individual, but that future superintendent is screening you as a district. So there may, there'll be questions like, are you going to require the superintendent to live in the district? If that is something you are very serious about, then you need to know that that will whittle away at the number of candidates. They will want to see how large the district is. They will want to see your website. I mean, when I was looking for my first superintendency, I did a 50-mile radius around my home because I knew I didn't want to move. I had children that were at critical ages, that moving would not be a good idea, like middle school or early high school, right? So I knew I wanted to find a district that, um, I didn't have to, to move into. I also was looking for a particular district with a particular demographic, with a particular, particular needs and things of that nature. And so the candidates are doing the same thing. They're looking at your district, they're seeing your size, they're seeing how many schools, they're seeing number of staff. They're looking at the budget. Your budget is available publicly and so they, they are looking for that. And so that will have an impact on how many candidates. I have a very, very small district right now and we have seven candidates and we haven't yet pushed out the tri-fold. So all that to say, they're out there and we are going to do everything that we can to cast a wide net to bring as many candidates to be considered.
Okay. I think we have time for one more question if anyone has one.
I, you know, you can take Illinois Association of School Boards' open positions and lay them across the other, um, colleagues and see how many openings they have in Illinois. I feel pretty confident that we have the most openings because many districts are using the Illinois Association of School Boards, um, for the search. There aren't as many differences between searches, the search firms. Obviously, cost is something that I always was very careful of as a superintendent. That is something to consider. We all analyze and screen the applicants and we all vet the applications and we all bring a slate of candidates and we all help you through that process. It's who you feel most comfortable with. I will, you, you have my card, you have my direct cell phone number in the folder and I am available to you at any point in time. I think I helped Julie and sent her lists of potential interims, which I'm happy to see that you have one in place, so that was something I was happy to do. So I would look forward to working with you and would work hard at helping you find the best candidate for this district because that's what your children deserve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Hi, good evening. We're going to fight over here. And you know, you got no one to pick your bet. You have to know when to pick your, your battles. So, um, good evening. Thank you for, um, having us wait with our competition. You know, all, all three, um, firms that you're interviewing, we all know each other and, and they're all great colleagues. You can't go wrong with any of the, the three, but we're here tonight to tell you why we're the best, the best choice. I feel like I'm a shark. My name's Kerry, Kerry Foneraro, and I'm here with my colleague Lynn Burke. We're from H by eight. Then why don't you start off and, and share a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I'm Lynn Burks. I am not retired and I'm not a superintendent. Actually, I'm a 24-year board member from Yorkville. So, um, I'm, I'm really excited to get into this work because it's, I, I take this work from the perspective of a board member and, um, and the needs that you need as a board member. This isn't just about filling a position. You realize that the process really is about learning a lot about what you need and then also is lays the groundation, lays the foundation as you continue to move your strategic planning forward. I'm an economist by trade, higher education, taught 30 years, made my way all the way to the provost office, um, but then off I made a practicing HR professional. And so I do a lot of work with a lot of organizations, education, non-education, with developing people and doing, doing a lot of work in talent acquisition. So, thank you. Thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for your service. I know you also have a couple of new board members as well. Welcome to the club. It's some of the most rewarding work that you ever do and, um, just glad to be here.
In, in my background, I am retired. I'm a retired super, superintendent. I spent 15 years as superintendent of Cass School District 63 in DuPage, DuPage County. Prior to that, I was an assistant superintendent, um, for everything, especially HR. I was a principal, I was assistant principal and a, and a teacher. In addition to doing searches, I teach at National Lewis University in Ed Leadership Department. We have two other colleagues that will support us on this search. Nakia Hall, some of you might know Nakia. She's the Illinois School Board Association rep in the area.
Three Rivers.
Yes. And, and she's worked with your school district and surrounding, surrounding school district. She also was a, a board member in addition to her work for the School Board Association for a number of years, including president, just like, just like Lynn. And then we also have Ken Arndt, Dr. Ken Arndt. Ken is a retired superintendent like, like me. He was, um, at Elgawin School District 300, longtime successful superintendent there. And post-retirement, he's done some interim superintenances, including U46 and, and Elgin, the second largest school district in the, in the state, and 214 Northwest Township High School, 214, the largest high school district in the, in the state. And Ken has done a majority of our searches in the Chicago Land area, which we'll talk about just in a, just in a minute. Okay? All right. Like Lynn said, we truly believe that this is an important time for, for you and we believe it's the most important thing a board does is hire your educational leader and, and we're going to tell you why we think we can best help you, help you out. Um, all right. So I'm looking at the three screens you're talking about.
Pick one, Kerry.
Thank you. This, this one here, we'll, we'll, thank you for, for forwarding the screen, whoever's, whoever's doing, doing that, but, um, oh, you are. Here's a sampling of our experience, just over the last four years. We do searches and we do, do them well. And we do a lot of, a lot of searches. We have a number of associates, which we'll talk about in a little, in a, in a little bit. You can just see in the last four years, our recent Illinois, Illinois clients and our national clients, um, and you see a lot of school districts there. And President Eric, you, you referenced someone here had some experience over in, in Yorkville, heard good things about HYA where, where Lynn was the, the president and the board member there. We did that, that search and a number, number of other ones.
So, our difference, YHYA, you obviously have, you have several choices to make. And really unparalleled search customization. We come in unbiased. We come in with expertise in something we call the mixed method research methodology. We will create something called a leadership profile. We use, I don't want to get too economic-y on you, but we use a combination of qualitative research methods and quantitative research methods to create this leadership profile. The profile not only drives the skill sets that you are looking for in your next leader, but also uncovers a lot of internal and external themes and trends that, that bubble up through this process. And you will learn a lot about yourself. It'll inform you not only for this search process, but it will inform you as you continue to lead the district forward. We customize it to you. We work, we work for you. We support you and we want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're customizing the search even though we have a process and we will use best practice, um, to guide that process. We also know you have needs and we customize those needs. We are 100% transparent. There is a board portal that is available to each one of you that you will have 24/7 access to. So not, you know, we will ask for a contact with the board, but if it's 2:00 in the morning and you want to see the candidates, you can't sleep, you have access to that board portal. We provide updates regularly. Kerry and I never really turn it off and so, you know, we respond to, um, any, any need that you have within, within an hour. Because we know how important this process can be, because there are points and times in the search where things will work really quickly. Kerry and I just finished a three-week search. We don't suggest a three-week search, but we did do one in three weeks. It can be done. We do, we, we also provide you as a board support and training as you guide through the first slate, second slate, final slate of candidates. We will not be in the room with you, but we will train you and support you. We provide support to the candidates as well. We handle them with extreme care and empathy because they also, you know, they are, they're also making very important career choices as well. So we provide that care and support for you, but also for the candidates as well. And we have a single-point person for every applicant. Anything else?
Perfect. All right. As I referenced, referenced earlier, we do a lot of searches and here are some of our competitors compared to us, um, over a span of a couple, couple of years. And you can see, um, we, as Lynn referenced, we have 135-plus associates and not only do we work in the Chicago Land, but we work from coast to, coast to coast and north to, north to south. And the advantage that gives us is that we have tremendous networks. And Chicago has a good number of qualified superintendents, but when you can open up a whole United States and take a look and your timing is perfect as far as you're out ahead right now, and so you're going to be able to look at that first wave of, of superintendents that are applying for jobs, um, this, this fall, where decisions are going to be made in December and in January. So you're, you're right on target, right, right, right now. And so you can see, the reason we do that many searches, well, there's a number of reasons and I, I'm sorry, I'm not as humble as I should be, but we're good at it. We're very, very good at it or we wouldn't get that many, that many searches. I think currently, right now, for this school year nationwide, we probably have about 50 searches going on at this, at this moment. However, with that said, this team is our full-time job, if you hire us, is to be your consultant, help you find the best person for your top education position at this moment in time.
And we also are practicing in diversity, equity and inclusion. I myself have worked on some programming in this space. We have strong partnerships with national organizations. We, like everybody else, are learning in this process, but the process we will take you through as well is inclusive and we take a stand, we take, we follow a certain process. We try to mitigate bias as much as possible. And so if, if we are fortunate enough to be able to partner with you, we will, the protocols that we will take do minimize bias. So, you know, we just wanted, um, that we are practicing in this space. HYA is a woman-owned firm as well and substantial amount of our associates are females. So you want to talk about the process?
I do.
And then ask questions too, because we're going to go through our signature process. And if you have any questions as we speak through each of the stages, feel free to...
Yeah, feel free to...
Please.
...throw out a question at any, any time. So, our, our signature search process, the beauty of this, and we've been doing this since 1987, so 37 years ago. Lynn wasn't even born then. But actually, I, I started some work with the firm back in 1990. So I've seen it grow and, and develop over, over, over time. But the beauty with the signature search is not just our experience and seeing what works and what doesn't work so well, is that it's customizable to each individual school district to meet your specific, specific needs. This is so critically important. We're not looking to find you the best superintendent in the United States or in the world. We're looking to find you the best superintendent to meet your needs at this moment in time. So critically important for a successful search. So we start with engage and, and we work for you and, and so use us if you hire us and really make us work. You're board members. You're volunteer elected officials. You're hiring a service. Make the service work and we are happy, we enjoy doing it. But you're the decision makers and so we'll make recommendations to you and you'll say, "Yeah, that sounds great" or "What about this area?" or "What about that?" And we will change it and we'll do that as a, as a group. Also in the gauge, in the engagement phase, we will interview each one of you and each key official in your school, school, your interim superintendent. I'm sure you'll want him interviewed. The administrative assistant to the superintendent, I'm sure you'll want, want her interviewed. You know, your, your principals and some. We'll interview your, your administrative team as a whole. We'll interview your staffs, your faculty, your parents. Sometimes school districts have us interview their junior high students, some of their junior high students and key community members. In addition to interviewing them in groups and individually, we will provide a survey to collect data from your entire school, school community. All that information together, both the interviews and the survey data, we will use to develop the leadership profile. This will... We'll interview your staffs, your faculty, your parents. Sometimes school districts have us interview their junior high students, some of their junior high students, and key community members. In addition to interviewing them in groups and individually, we will provide a survey to collect data from your entire school community. All that information together, both the interviews and the survey data, we will use to develop the leadership profile. This will talk about your community, where they see the school district, and the needs of the school district, and also regarding your next leader. We will develop a profile and present it to you as a school board, and you will sign off on us or give us feedback. And we will use that as a tool. That tool, we will use to vet and screen candidates. And so when we get applications in, if it's not contained within the leadership profile, we're not even going to consider them. So we're going to use that to narrow down the pool. I mentioned our networks. Lynn has a network. I have a network. Nokia, Ken, they have networks. Our 135 associates have networks. We also have a database at HYA of over 6,600 candidates that have registered with us saying, "Please, consider me for a superintendency." Some are superintendents, some are cabinet-level positions. We keep that active. And so right off the bat, you sign up with us, you'll have an opportunity to access that 6,600 database that we have of superintendent candidates. We'll post your information on our website. Our website, we not only post the superintendent positions that we are doing searches for, but we post all of the ones across the United States. And so our website at HYA gets more hits than any other websites for superintendent searches around the United States. We get over 30-something individual, unique hits every month of superintendent candidates looking for jobs. And then we aggressively recruit, using not just our networks, but our associate networks to find candidates to fit your profile. You know, the majority, not the minority, but the majority of candidates that we recommend to a school district are not actively applying to the school district. HYA actually goes out and finds those candidates, meets the needs.
Kerry, I want to go back to, as well, we engage with you. This is a partnership. I know Illinois School Board has this thing balcony, dance floor, blah, blah. This is a true partnership. And so we spend a lot of time understanding where you're at, where the needs, you know, where you are as a board, to ensure that that next leader can collaborate with you so you can collectively move your vision forward. And when Kerry talks about aggressive recruit, it's purposeful recruiting. Purposeful recruiting. We use that profile and that skill set to go and ensure that we have candidates. And then what we also do, so whatever comes out of the profile, so let's say you need somebody with high emotional intelligence skills. We use industry-verified assessments to ensure that they possess that skill set, and you can see where they rank. Let's say, you know, part of this trend is you want to transform something, right? So you want tolerance for change. We assess those candidates to ensure that they have that skill set. So not only are we building this leadership profile, but when we recruit and when we have a slate of candidates, we also go and assess them with industry-verified tools to ensure they possess those skills that are needed, that make this the best fit for your community and your board and your teachers.
Thank you. Very well said. The selection process, we will present to you a slate of candidates that we believe any of the candidates would be a very successful superintendent in your school district. And you'll tell us, "We want four, we want six, we want 12." You'll be interviewing forever. But we'll present you a slate, and as Lynn said earlier, we'll provide you with the support you need to structure the interviews, to provide support. We will customize questions for you. We will help you any way we can through that interview process. And then we will help provide tools to you and support so you can go through a selection process and find that number one candidate for your school district. And our job doesn't stop then. We need that person to be successful, and so we will support that individual and we will support you after you make that decision, starting with a workshop between you and the, a formal workshop between you and the superintendent, to make sure everything is in line. And if you're able to get somebody in place in January, that'd be outstanding. You could have five, six months of transition, you know, where that person might be able to meet one day a month or so and get to know the school district and get to know the key people in the community. And we don't change our phone numbers or our emails afterwards. You could call me, or Lynn, or the other consultants a year from now, two years from now. You'd be part of our network then, just like this new superintendent is. And education, and all of you are in this profession, is a caring profession, and it makes us feel good if we can help and support somebody, and we are more than happy to do so.
So any question on any of these stages of the search process? Okay. So then Kerry just talked about the tentative schedule. Obviously, this is, I mean, this is, you control what this schedule would look like. But as we walked you through, this would put you in a very good position where you could hire somebody by, you know, in January of 2025 and start that transition right away. This also allows for, you may want to go do a site visit. You may want to see this particular leader at their, you know, where they're at, at their district right now. There are many school boards that like to do that, that like to go to their environment and see what that environment looks like. So this, you know, this schedule actually lends a lot of flexibility, but also offers a very nice transition period as well. But customizable as well.
Absolutely. Why don't we go to our last, our second and last slide? There we go. All right. So if you're looking for the lowest cost to find your next educational leader, it's not going to be HYA. We provide a full-service search. One of the other firms will be lower, at least one of the other firms will be lower than this. As we said, we believe this is the most important decision you make. Our cost to you is $22,900 to do a search. We do offer optional things if you want them, a more research-based survey in different languages.
More open-ended questions.
More open-ended questions, extended background, in-depth background checks that we're not capable of doing, you know, where you do credit reports and social media dives and verification of degrees and things like that. But our costs are $22,900. Not only do you get Lynn and I and our two colleagues that are, which also get the whole HYA team, and in our packet, we list some of the program directors, assistants, and support. We have a whole back office. Ask the other firms, what type of support do they have beyond the associates? That back office is so critical, not only supporting us, but they support you and they support the candidates. And as Lynn referenced earlier, it's important. You know, we want that, each one of those candidates to be supported all the way through the process, because it's tough for them, just like it is tough for you. Couple of things with the $22,900. I mentioned the optional service. We will match any competitor's proposed fee if they match the same level of service as we have. And so if one of the other firms is going to say, "We're going to do everything HYA is going to do, and we're going to do it for $5,000 cheaper," well, then we would match that price. It's a fixed price. We're going to work for a number of months helping you find a new superintendent. The last thing we're going to do, we're going to guarantee, we're not going to have you hire the person in a year, in two years, or three years from now, try to solicit that person for another superintendency. That would be wrong on our point, on our part. Client satisfaction. We survey each one of the boards after we do the search. We have a 9.4 rating out of 10 as far as client satisfaction. We offer a two-year guarantee that if for any reason the first year that superintendent does not come back the second year, any reason at all, we will do the search again and no additional cost to you. In the second year, the same thing, if the superintendent leaves. Now, there are some conditions with that. We'll guarantee that we'll do it again. 92%, 94% also of the superintendents we place complete their first contract and go off for the second contract. And you know, most superintendent contracts are three years. And the average superintendent that we place is close to seven years, and the average superintendent in the state is five. What questions do you have for us? More than happy to answer anything you can ask us.
Hi there. Can you tell us a little bit about the interviews with the stakeholders and what that looks like, and like the timeline on that? And then the surveys automatically a part of that? Or is that just some things that we're able to just tell you, yes, we're interested, or no, we're not, and it just varies on what we want?
So let's just take the staff as an example, their stakeholder group. So we would meet in person with each one of your school's staffs. And we'll also offer them an option to do a virtual, too, so they can do in-person or they can do virtual, whatever they feel comfortable with. And we would do that with each one of your schools. The survey is completely different. It'll be a survey that we would ask you to send out in your weekly communication, post on your website. And anybody can access that, and they would list, you know, "I'm a teacher," you know, "I'm a parent," and so on. And so that's additional information. And it'll ask different questions that will come across through our focus group meetings, our interview meetings. Does that answer your questions, Kelly?
It does. How long would you say the process typically takes to do, based on, like, a district our size? We have three schools. Our enrollment is, I'm sure you know the answer.
So it's, we would do it four to six weeks. It would all be done in four to six weeks. We don't like leaving the survey dangling out there.
Yeah, we keep it pretty tight.
Yeah, we might suggest 10 days for the survey. We send out good communication and...
We get good, our response rate is...
Yeah. It's been very high.
Yeah. It's statistically significant. And then with the focus groups as well, I mean, we do try to be very efficient.
About an hour.
Forty-five minutes each. We're very efficient and cognizant of people's time. We'll work with the different schedules around that. You know, with communities and business partnerships and parents, we make sure that, you know, we offer multiple opportunities. But that can usually be done in a matter of a couple of weeks.
And, you know, our last search, we had some, we had a handful of teachers that weren't able to make it in person or virtually. And so we did phone calls. You know, we called them up individually, and we talked to them. We want to make sure the stakeholders know the board is very interested in what they have to say.
And you're there, too. I mean, it's a very open process, and you'll learn a lot about your stakeholders. It's such a healthy process. And you'll see common themes bubble up as well. That will continue to inform you, as I noted before. But you're also part of that process, or you're welcome to be part of that process. I mean, observing.
May I ask a quick question? I don't recall you reviewing. How do you like to select the stakeholder groups and who gets to participate in those?
We're going to rely on you. We're going to give you some examples. And we'll say, "We would recommend you talk to each staff at each school. We would recommend you talk to the parents. We'd recommend you to talk to this group, to that group, the administrative team, and so on." And you're going to tell us, "No, we don't really want to talk to this group or that." Or maybe you might want to talk to some of our junior high students as well. And so we're going to rely on you. We're going to give you what we've done in the past. And if that works, you're great. If not, we're here to learn what you need. Any other questions?
What's the average size of each focus group would you have? I'm just thinking, like, if we had, let's say, I'm just going to make a number up, 200 community members that are dead set on, "I want to be part of a focus group." How do you, you know...
So we could do 200. We'd probably look to split it up, but...
Yeah, we'd split it up.
You know, we have associates. I mean, we would split it off.
We would split it up.
Yeah, we were not going to have a free-for-all for 200 people. And so we'd break it up into 450s or something like that. We have the staff to be able to do that.
And how long would that be, if you had 50 people? I mean...
Forty-five minutes.
No more than an hour.
Hour.
People's, I mean, you know your schedule. I mean, just trying to get your meeting together, right? You got, you know, kids that play sports, and you've got to start at school, and you've got your family, and you've got your personal work, and you've got your own work, and so it's tough. We need to really be respectful with people's time. And we like giving people options, too. The virtual option's becoming more and more popular because people can do it, you know, in a more convenient way. But we offer both, because we really believe face-to-face communication, we like that the plus.
We'd work with your board meeting schedule as well. So if we could align some of the update meetings with your board schedule, we know, you know, how tight your schedules are. Your interviews can be done virtually or on the phone to meet your needs, you know? If it has to be Sunday, that's, you know, whatever those needs may be. I know Sundays are big board member days, if you have a Monday meeting, or whatever your meeting schedule looks like.
We'll talk to you at 7:00 AM on a Saturday morning or...
7:00 AM on a Sunday.
Yeah.
8:00 PM on a Sunday.
Whatever works.
My last question is, do you have any thoughts on the market right now as far as superintendents looking for a job and open positions?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
So based on our experience, you know, we will advertise through our website. We will send it out. We'll post it on our social medias and so on. If we get 30 candidates that make it through the filter, the leadership profile, that's, we would say, we hit the mark. And your district has an excellent reputation. You have a very nice location. Don't know what you're going to pay. We don't know what you're going to pay your superintendent. But if it's regionally competitive, you'll get 30 solid candidates that should be able to be successful in your school district. Now you're looking for the right fit. Again, not the best superintendent, the right fit. Has this changed? It has over years. If you would have asked me 10 years, I would have said 40. And if you would have asked me 30 years ago, it might have been closer to 50. But still...
It's a pretty robust market still.
You shouldn't have any problems getting qualified candidates to apply for your position.
Especially because of our national reach and our national network.
Good question.
Yeah, really good question.
Any other questions?
Just a really quick one. You said you had 50 searches currently going nationwide.
Constantly 50.
Yeah, nationwide. Do you know how many are in Illinois right now?
So we're doing Nutger, you know, Nutger High School District. We're doing Township High School District 211, it's a name too off the top of my head. And then we're contenders, like we are here, we're probably another dozen or so right now in the immediate Chicago area. And then we have... And then we have some downstate, a little behind in.
But those, I know it's, those searches don't compete with one another. They don't because those profiles are different. You're not Nutria. You're not their district. Your demographics are different. You're, you're, you, the students you serve are different. And so I know while, you know, sometimes, oh, we have so many searches, the searches don't compete. And because of our, because of our 135-plus associates, we are your team.
And you'll have a full time. Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. It was very good.
Malcolm was very nice.
Could I just say one last thing?
Yes. Give us a closing.
No, no, it has nothing to do with this.
He's a long-winded retired superintendent.
Don't give a superintendent a microphone.
No.
Steve smiling. But no, you know, thank you for your, for your service as a school board member. You know, I live in a community and, you know, there's a school district and, and so on, and I don't know if I have the guts to raise my hand and say, "Community vote on me." And so you did have the guts to do it. And not only did you have the guts, but you did it for the right reasons to help kids. And there's not a lot more noble things you could do in the world today to volunteer your services for the kids. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. It's really nice to meet you all. Thank you very much. You too. Yeah, stay cool. And I'm going to give you a.
Okay, we're all back. So we're ready for you. If you guys want, we got the podium there. We got the microphone. I believe we can pull up the, I think Lincoln should have your presentation.
Terrific.
Then we'll see.
Clicker.
Three screens here so you can.
Just make you try and see it.
Got it, yes.
So I have to turn a little bit this way.
Go ahead. You have three options.
All right, look at that. It's what, quite a show in here. Good evening, board members and Mr. Stein, certainly nice to see you. And certainly our members in our audience, our community members and sort of my staff. So thank you for letting us be here this evening. We're actually very excited to be here to share our proposal with you. We know that you are going through a very important decision, and that's picking your next superintendent. And we know from being superintendents ourselves, this is a, this is an important decision that you're going to make and one that you're taking very seriously. And we know that there are a lot of great teams out there that you're looking at, and we hope that we are going to be that right fit for you this evening. So we're going to share our proposal, some of the services that we provide tonight. And please make sure that you stop us and ask questions. You can write on your notes there for later if you want to, but hopefully we'll be able to share some of our information tonight. So here we go. So my name is Kara Coglinis. I'm a local gal. I live over in Frankfurt, so it was an eight-minute drive here. So that was kind of nice. I have five kids. I've put them all through Lincolnway East. I sent my last one to Iowa last, two weeks ago. So I'm an empty nester now, so that's why I have a smile on my face. I have lots more energy. So I've, I've been doing education for about 35 years. Please don't do the math, but I have done 13 years as a superintendent. I was in the classroom about 15 years and the rest of it was doing assistant soup work and those kinds of things. So I am a passionate educator and just love this, this work that we do. As a superintendent, I have served in small districts, medium districts, and kind of a large district. I was, I started off cutting my teeth at St. George's, a little district, one school district in Burbane. I loved being there. It was a small district and that's where I learned my craft. Then I went on to Homework 33C, just down the street. And then right now I'm at Crete Moni School District, why I've been there for seven years. So more recently, I, I received my certificate of executive coaching from Northwestern. I have noticed in, in working with a lot of our schools and our students, mostly our teachers, this idea of coaching is becoming more and more important for retaining teachers, retaining our staff and our administrators as well. So I have started a lot of the work here. My district is coaching teachers and staff as well. And I do a lot of national and local, local speaking engagements throughout the country. I have done, worked with ISB. I've done their, their South Cook dinners. I think I've even done one for our group that is at. And I also have done a lot of publishing of journals for the school board magazine as well, the superintendent journals. So that's a little bit about me. And so I'm going to turn this over to John. Good to do so.
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Bartel. This is John. I've been a superintendent for 24 years. And I know what you're looking at me and you're saying, "That's not possible, you know?" And even if you hadn't thought that, I appreciate you even entertaining that thought. I also have a larger family of six children. My youngest three, what I hate to tell Kara right now is that she seems to think she's an empty nester, but I'm.
They come back.
But they do come back. And my youngest three are now living with me as two are starting their first teaching jobs this year. They're the only ones who went into the family business. And the other ones are doing their own thing and pursuing their passions. And I'm very fortunate to be their father. You can see here on the slide where I've been. The most recent place that I've been is Bloomingdale. I've been there for the last 13 years. And in that capacity, I've had many opportunities. Those opportunities you can see here as, I, I don't mean to acronym you to death here, but Suburban Superintents Association is SSA. I've been on their Board of Directors for a bit and was their president in 2020. And I was the secretary and treasurer. I am the secretary and treasurer for the Educational League of Illinois. Is the oldest professional association in Illinois. It was founded in 1880. And I'm also was the president of our DuPage County IAS for a few years. And I was recognized as the distinguished superintendent while I was in that capacity. Coaching is important for me as well. I'm a certified coach, but one of the things that I've made sure that is a tenant of my responsibility to my leaders is that I put them through a administrative development program. In that program, I want to make sure that they have the ability to accumulate multiple skills that they can put into, in, into effect to impact their leadership and then the ones that they serve within their schools and community. So what we do is I've worked with the IASA to put my, most of my administrative team through a coaching for leaders cohort where they learn how to become coaches and then utilize those skills to best support their staffs at every level, no matter who they serve, whether that's at the central office or at the building level. Why don't you click on?
All right. And I'm just going to introduce this gentleman in the back. He's sitting quietly, but this is Richard Bolts. He's the part, one of the partners at the firm. Rich, you can wave at everybody. There you go.
Real quickly, our firm offers a variety of different services. The most, the one that we're here to speak to more closely is the one that you're seeking, which is a superintendent search. We do search for other administrative positions. We also have a fold-in component for coaching and mentoring of people that we serve that have taken this up on. Those services, many of us have been designated as certified coaches and can serve in that capacity. We offer some strategic planning services and we have a, a former superintendent of yours who's pretty darn good with data, who is, helps us with our data analysis in Dr. White. So we're very, we feel like we're very comprehensive and offer you a range of services so that you are empowered to make the decisions that are best for your school district and community. As you can see here, here's a sampling of many members of our partners and associates. They represent school districts all over the state of Illinois. One of the things that separates us from others is that we, we only serve Illinois districts. We're not, we're not looking to do national searches. We are really more focused on making sure that we can use the connections that we have as sitting superintendents and experienced administrators to attract people to the positions that we're looking for. And that doesn't provide an ethical dilemma as it might with other associations who are, would have to be talking to other member associations that would cause a conflict between school boards. We don't have that connection and that serves to your advantage when we're doing the search process.
All right, so I'm up to talk about the three phases of the process. And these are fairly standard. We'll talk about some of the overviews, but I really want to focus on some of the nuances that our firm can offer you within these packages. So the first one is just developing that leadership profile. That's determining the characteristics that you're looking for in your superintendent, the recruitment application process, the screening, the interview, and most important, vetting. And then the last one is just presenting the slate to you. So I'm going to go in a little bit more detail. So what does that phase look like? So the first time, we meet with each of you and we discuss what timelines you're looking for. Generally, the search takes anywhere between 10 to 12 weeks. You can have that a little bit faster, a little bit slower, depending on what your, what your timeframe is looking like. But we were thinking certainly by December, you would be able to have that meeting. We would be focusing on what are the board priorities? Now, you know, in your conversations here, you are going to be looking for specific skills in a particular superintendent. I know longevity is important to you. I know focusing on somebody who can communicate with the community and reaching out to them, building that trust, those are very important skills that we are going to be looking for in some of those candidates. But we're going to be asking you, what other things are you looking for? Are you looking for someone who's strong in curriculum, finance? I know you're doing a lot with your gifted program and your identification more recently. I think I saw a presentation of yours from, you know, adding in the Northwestern pieces, you know, and how are you sharing that information out with your families and so forth? So those would be some things we would be focusing on matching for you. The next piece would be identifying an online survey. Clearly, you want to get the input from all the stakeholders, not only for you, but your parents, your staff, administrators. Everybody wants something different. You're looking for certain things, but certainly the staff is looking for something different versus administration. So you would need to pull all that together. So this online survey, the beauty of that, it gets to a lot of people. So you have a really good, solid base instead of just running a couple of small focus groups with a few people. So that gives you kind of that latitude and depth for getting that information. And then if you feel that you would like to do some focus groups, focus groups have their advantage. The focus groups are getting to hear the individual stories. People will share your stories about, you know, what they're looking for or a situation that they want to share with you. That actually helps couple in with the data to round out a better profile. But that's really up to you and depending on if you feel like you're getting enough from the survey or if you think you want to layer on the focus group. So that could be determined a little bit later on. Once we get that information, while we're setting the, the priorities, we are going to then take some of that data from the online survey, perhaps the focus groups. And from that, we're going to put together a community engagement report. So we're pulling that all together so you can see what everyone has said. And then from that, you're going to be building your superintendent profile. So what exactly are you looking for? So everybody is really on the same page of the characteristics that you're looking for. Now, that is really important when it comes for us, when we are then looking at your candidates. Because then we can start screening their applications. We can start looking to see what their backgrounds are. We can start looking at their transcripts and we can start really focusing on where their strengths are. And that helps us to tease out so that we can put together a panel that is going to meet your needs right away. Okay, so for phase two, what does that look like? So in looking to develop that candidate pool, we certainly have access to the IASA Job Bank. That's a quintessential where everybody goes to look for jobs, right? And then we also have our website as well, the EDLS website. The other pieces that we put out there as well is we are starting to look and put out more on social media. As you know, social media drives everything. And what we're also noticing, so much of superintendent searches comes from word of mouth. Somebody knows somebody and says, "Hey, have you looked at that?" Because oftentimes when you do superintendent searches, you end up going to a small radius of who's in the communities because they pay attention. What we want to do with social media is go a little bit further out so that we can get a much deeper pull. And the other thing that we do is a press release. It's really important to get out to the community what you guys are doing because they want to know where you're at in the process. And we can put specifics in there and then if you want to invite them to a focus group or into a board meeting, it helps them engage the community again. And then also we have the personal recruitment as well. We, we know a lot of folks out there that we can talk to, encourage, that might fit that profile. And so that's another piece to look at as well. So once we put that candidate, all that information out there, we're going to start that application process. It is online. And we do a thorough job in assessing. As you know, vetting candidates is really important because you don't want a candidate that has slipped through and there was something that didn't get caught. So we took, take a look at transcripts. We are looking at social media presence out there. We are checking for, you know, the Illinois School Board Association, the Illinois State Board of Education. We are checking their credentials as well. So we're making sure that all those pieces have been met. Once we have that, we start looking for doing a fast screen on some of the candidates. And that might look with like some quick virtual calls. And then we start pulling people in to start doing those more in-depth interviews, focused on the, the profile that you have selected. And once we get that slate together, then we're ready to present it to you in closed session. And so John, he's going to talk about phase three.
Absolutely. This is kind of where you step in. What we will do is we're here to support you in this part of the process. It's helpful that you take, we'll have some interview protocols for you to take a look at, to consider. We'll set up the interviews with the final slate of candidates. I'm, I'm going to go on, on record as saying, maybe they'll be around six because we also want to make sure we're, we're conscious of your time in this process because it does take quite some time. And during this process, you're going to be narrowing your candidates from that pool of six down to a pool of two. Your two to three finalists then will be the ones who will be providing you with the, an excessive amount of data that we've collected on them so that you can get to know them well before you actually meet them for the first time. And then you will see data in the form of the radar. And then you will see data in the form of the radar diagram, which is on the left-hand side of the slide, what you see are the characteristics that have been identified in your superintendent profile, and they can be different based on the ones that are identified in your groups. And the candidates that seem to strike more closely to the characteristics that you're seeking are going to be closer to that outer edge when you're looking at the data points, and those that are further away from that are going to be closer to the center of that diagram. So if you're looking at it from how do you read the radar diagram, that's how you would look at it, and so you could see how they perform based on ratings that you're making of these candidates as they're going through an interview process.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I have a question.
I'm happy to relinquish the clicker to you. The next stage is kind of where you can customize this as much as you'd like to. Do you want to have stakeholder groups? Do you want to have individual groups that are going to interview these final two to three people? And then take the feedback from those groups into consideration. Do you want us to go into and essentially provide you with additional feedback and interview? There's also one other piece down here near the bottom in the document, a performance-based interview. A performance-based interview could be a task that you give your final candidates an opportunity to fill within a certain time period in order to determine what competencies you're looking for and what kind of product did they create for you in that process. It's an option we can create for you so that you can use it as kind of a separator between things. At the end, we will take care of your rating forms, accumulate the data, share all of that data with you, and give you the opportunity to make the decision that's from O'Keefe. And so when we get to that point, you're selecting their candidate, we'll give you all that data, as I mentioned before. Your attorney will negotiate a contract with the finalist. One of the things that separates Educational Leadership Solutions and other firms that you're talking about is that we offer that coaching and mentoring of your finalist. We're in it after you've hired your person as well. We offer as part of the cost that you will pay for the service, the opportunity to give a coaching and mentoring for at least a year into their new service. In that way, you also have the opportunity to get some continual feedback, because we work for you, and we can tell you how well they're doing based on what we judge. And Karen and I have been doing this for many years, and we can say honestly, we've seen a lot of different things over the course of our careers, and we will take your profile of what you want your superintendent to be able to do and coach them through these situations. Or if they're a first-year candidate that you select, we can mentor them at that particular point as well, because there is a difference between mentoring and coaching. You can combine them for sure, but when you've never done the position before, it's helpful to have the mentor, and that mentorship will be available to your finalist or your candidate or your new superintendent at their leisure. They can contact us when they need us. There's a two-year guarantee of placement, which means we aren't going to, as we conduct searches all over Illinois, we leave your superintendent alone. We will not be trying to recruit your finalists for other jobs. That's part of our guarantee to you. You want this person to stay here and grow here in your community? That's what we're going to try to do and help support. And we will stay away from that your candidate being a partnership that we do. We'll help publicize their successes with press releases and social media updates through our platforms and also suggested through your platforms as well. The next slide would say this, we kind of go down to this last bit here, which is we customize this to what you'd like to see. You've been presented with lots of options, and that's one of the reasons why we provided you with the physical version of our slideshow, because there's a lot to consume here. And so I am not going to go and read your slides to you. I'm going to let you do that on your own, but you can pick and choose what you think is best for you, and then we take it from there. It's a confidential search process. The large group of candidates, we're going to keep that information confidential, because some of them may be sitting superintendents, and if they're not selected to be in your top six, then they need to be able to know that they're protected and where they may be. But the top six are going to have to understand that once they make the top six, that's going to become known. That'll become known to you. You will know who they are and a lot of information about them that we've been able to gather through Google searches of their names and other ways that we find background on them. One advantage of having Karen and I, as she animated before, we know a lot of people, and we could talk to a lot of people who know who these individuals are. I've got to be connected to somebody that knows your candidates. That's how I view it, and then I just have to find out, where is that person so that I can get that information for you? And I'm hoping it'll all be exactly the information you're looking for. Selection and a data assignment will help you in that final selection process. We are your team, and I'm going to say, I'm not involved in other searches for the consulting firm. If you choose us, I am your dedicated team member. I am not going to be splitting my time with other school districts searching for their superintendents. My focus is on O'Keefe, as will Karen's. And Don White will also be the key data collection and analysis person for the firm, and if we are selected, you will have opportunities to talk with him about this.
Okay. The question you've all been waiting for, how much, right? So I'm sure your eyes won't rise to that big bowl of wine yet. I'll talk about a couple of things at the top. So what's included in the package? It's the stakeholder online survey, the superintendent profile, all the recruitment and advertising, the application, the screening, the interviewing, the vetting, the data analysis of those interviews, and then certainly board guidance throughout the process. So these are things that we consider complimentary. Coaching and mentoring for that one year, the press release, social media posts to inform the community. So that comes in at $9,900. Now, there is some travel expense that will be billed separately. I'm waiting my travel expenses. I live so close, so you get a free one with me. He travels a little bit further.
Sorry. I do live a little further away.
It would be narrow, clearly, with that, and then certainly the next to you, the tenth floor. If you're interested and the board feels they need additional information, there is the focus group that we can do, which usually takes at least a day or two, and then wrapping that up, and that's $1,500 for consulting on that. Is that something you can kind of lay out and consider? Okay. We've kind of talked about some of those bonuses. Is there anything you want to say on here?
Really, we're committed to you. In this process, it is our goal to make sure that your questions are answered, your candidate is the one that you're the most behind in this process, you have all the information that you're seeking so that you can make that decision. After all, he or she will be your only true employee, and therefore, you want to make sure that this is the person that you have that ability to talk to intimately and work alongside as you're building the priorities of the district through several years. I mentioned that guarantee before, and your satisfaction is the most important part of this process. If the selected candidate does not complete at least two years in this role here in this district, we are willing to come back and do this again while waiving our general P to do this all over again, because we're committed to making sure that you're satisfied and that you're happy with the person that you've selected. Now, we believe that it won't have to come to that, but it's there for you in the event that it does have that call back. But we will continue to, you know, if there's parts of this process you don't know, you're stuck, you're not really competent in something, we stay with you throughout this in order to get to when you're finally happy with the person you've selected. So it's not, here's your six, good luck, everybody. It's a lot more involved. We're with you during that process, giving you what you need to move you forward and helping you and taking your direction to help you in that process in any way.
So questions?
I'll step right up first. Community engagement has been very important to us. Everybody's asking in one capacity or another. The finances appear to be in line with what we would expect. The focus group, when we're talking about, you know, multiple focus groups ranging from staff, parents, community members, et cetera, they're all got skin in the game. It's either their kids or their property tax dollars, et cetera. How many real consultants do you guys normally have for those kind of focus groups? Is it one? Is it two?
I think it generally would depend on how many focus groups you're running. Typically, it would probably be both of us if we're running three or four of them.
Right.
Because we'll probably do them one night, one to two nights, and then he would be taking two groups, I would be taking the other groups, and then we would pull all that data together into a report.
So the idea of having both of you in there to run the focus groups, that's totally on par with expectations. Okay. I can tell you first off, that's going to be real important, and I appreciate it. You're covering a lot of good ground here. I like how you guys are doing everything, so thank you.
I have a question. On phase three, your step one, you talk about narrowing the candidates down to two to three finalists, and then the board does its interviews. Is that the first time that we do the interview? Is there only, are there interviews prior to that with the six that you narrow it down? The larger search to the six is the two to three that we, could you?
You would need to do the six.
Okay.
So that you would narrow the six to three. The next phase would be the one where you'd say, are we going to do stakeholders? Are we going to do, what's your next stage of your process that you think you want to set? We set that up, and we get that, and we work the question through you. This is what we need to ask. These are the priorities that we'd like to see them answer, and we'd like to see how they respond to this. So then we send out, you get, we gather community data or stakeholder data for some reason you want in that process, and then make sure you're presented with that data as well. And then at that point, it becomes a question of whether or not you want to have that performance base. Whether you want to set them up in a time to present you with a pass. It's like, yes, that's what it would be.
And I tell you, I highly recommend that. We do that in all of our interviews in my district, and you'll think you go with one candidate. When you see them up there performing, it changes the game. And so I think it helps you feel very strong about, oh, it's a little late now, isn't it? There we go. It really does help. If you're debating between one or two, it'll be a game changer for you. So I really highly recommend that. And then we come up with a task for that process, and then they have the performance to run quick.
The ready example that I could give you is that 90-day plan. What do you do in your first month, your second month, your third month? What are your priorities? How do you articulate that? How do you then? I mean, that is, that's something that is the quickest one that I could come up with to share with you. There could be others that we could present you with. There's so many different ways. It's really your decision to make as to how you.
What are your priorities?
Absolutely.
I have two questions. One is, if we could go back, I just have a quick question on this data on phase three, step one slide, the data, the diagram, right?
Yeah.
This diagram is just an example of attributes, right? We would come up with whatever our own.
Your superintendent profile fills in those traits that would be around the radar diagram. So you would be directly choosing what those were.
What those are. Okay. And then my second question is, it's my impression that you both have full-time jobs right now. Is that right? Okay. So has this presented any challenges for you in servicing a district? Would we be the only district in the next, you know, in this timeframe that you're servicing? And how do you balance your day job with our, you know, needs and?
That's actually a really good question, and one that we talked about. I said, someone's going to ask me that, right? So going through the interview processes, are very familiar with what we do on a day-to-day basis. So you are our main candidate here, our main group that we're working with. So most of this is done on our own time, after hours and on weekends, and, you know, superintendents do work on weekends a lot, so that's something that we're used to. So I don't know if you want to add to that.
I would say we're dedicated to you.
Yeah.
And we're not involved in other searches. We are here for you. That's, the firm selected the two of us as the best fit to work with your district. As someone who's been in my current district for 13 years, I know how to do that work and balance it with other priorities that come up. I would say having multiple children also has helped in that.
Time management?
Yes. It has definitely helped. But in the end, we set up this time and set this time aside and agreed to this because we're committed to seeing you have the success, and we stay with you until the very end and beyond that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Rain?
That is rain.
I did not expect that.
Which makes bringing in the umbrella one of my smarter decisions I've made today.
Other questions?
What is your, this is just something I've asked the other two. Do you have any thoughts on the current state of the market as far as job openings that are out there for superintendents and candidates?
So the only, I'll start with this, and you can add on to this. You are in a great time. You were very smart in the timing of this. This is the great time to do it, between September and December. You are getting first chance. There are eight openings out there right now. There was a lot more in the summer, as I think some of you knew, but there's eight openings right now. You're the only one in this particular area. So we're going to get the top candidates, because as you know, when people start getting itchy and they want to look around, they start looking at September. So you're at a great market right now.
And with our associations that we belong to professionally, we can talk it up, and if the board is indicating we would like a more experienced candidate, great. If you're saying, we'd like to have somebody who's really talented, fresh, and really strong in these characteristics, and the experience is not as important to us as being a successful superintendent, we have those connections as well. So it's really, it's one advantage you get with us that we can offer you is leveraging our contacts to help bring people in, people we know. Other superintendents I know who may have people that are within their own cabinets that are ready to make the jump to becoming a superintendent. These are also people that, if that's what you're looking for, we could readily put that together. But I foresee a rather large pool of interested candidates. Your district is very attractive. They're going to want to be here. And so I don't foresee that as being a problem, finding what you're looking for.
It is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And I hope you brought your umbrellas tonight.
We appreciate your time tonight, and good luck on this process.
Good luck, Senator. What's your decision? Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
See, that is right. It's supposed to be past it anyway.
We want to go home right now, anyways. All right. Is everyone okay to discuss? If you want to take a break, do we want to, what do you guys want to do? All right. 8:51, so let's come back at nine o'clock, or reconvene? Yeah.
As long as we don't have someone kicking somebody. I don't think it's that much.
We're taking a 10-minute break, and we'll be back, and we're going to keep the livestream going.
We'll be right back after. We'll be right back after these messages.
Okay, alright, so I guess we can go around the room if we want, or if we want, does anyone have a preference on a firm we can discuss, or thoughts, open to how we want to handle the discussion? Don't all jump at once? Was it too much information? Do we not want to discuss tonight? Do we want to come back and?
If everyone, if everyone's okay with thinking out loud, I'll be willing to start. I mean, you know, if I were to, to rank the, the groups, I would put HYA first, given their extensive years of experience, their, their network and reach. Their, the package of services is extremely robust, and that's included in the fee. The fee was quite shocking at first, but when they said they would match a competitor at the same level of service, I see now why Yorkville, I think it was, was able to get their, the rate that they did. I, I just thought that they, they, they have just a really deep bench of associates to, to help with the process. We have a main point of contact, or four of them, with extensive backgrounds. I, I just thought, i- if we could get them at a reasonable rate, you know, a 9.4 out of 10 rating, two-year guarantee, average retention of 94%, seven-year average stay versus the state that has five years, and then continuous support as long as we need it, they would be willing to answer the phone. So, I really liked what, what, what they had to offer. I liked all the candidates, I really did. I thought everyone did a fantastic job, well-spoken. I think our community would interact well with each of the candidates, but I just really liked the overall product that was offered by HYA. And then, sorry, there was one other thought that, that I wanted folks to just consider. There, optics sometimes can, can play into things. As much as we don't want there to be optics, it can happen, and I think sometimes when we have people coming back, that, you know, I, I worked extremely well with Dr. White when he was here, when I worked on the referendum, so this is nothing personal with, with his firm, but I think that there could be a bad optic with having somebody come back and having, it can be seen as a positive and a negative, right? He knows our district, but yet it's a person that some folks may see as being a conflict of interest because he was here and he knows a lot of the, the people. So, it's something that I, I wrestle with still, but something I would just want us to, to think about if, if we, we think that's a positive or a negative. Thanks.
Julie? Who else want to go next?
Alright, I thought all three of them were fantastic candidates for recruitment, but, I mean, we have Carmen Ayala from IASB, I mean, she's pretty great in itself. But, HYA, what I didn't like about HYA, is that they're nationwide recruiting. I don't think that's good for our district. We need someone in our dis- for our district that's local, that's going to stay with us, knows Mokina, or knows our area. And there, where, with, with educational leadership, I feel Dr. White's firm would probably suit us best on that trajectory. Julie here, but, you know, it's not a bad optic, to know the district, and to know what the interest of Mokina School District is. This is what our district really needs right now, is someone who knows our district and what this district needs, forward, for our children, and for our district. So I don't think it's a conflict of interest, and I don't think that's a bad thing, because he knows people here already. And so EDLS would be my, my top choice.
Okay, thank you Anna. Who else?
We had three presentations. Most expensive one did not give me a folder. They gave no handouts, nothing. They are almost an additional $10,000 above their next competitor. That is important to me. When I look at the care of the presentation, right there, I thought the Education Leadership Solutions did a better job than the other two for multiple reasons, not only knowing our district, trying to help provide for what our specific needs are, but also being a good return on investment for taxpayers. I, I was a little let down with what HYA really presented today, and, and I honestly expected a little bit more, and then to tell us at the end, "Well, if you have somebody else that can match our level of, of care, we will lower our fees." No, no, that, that just doesn't grab me the right way at all. Whether we have a previous connection to a person that is part of that team, at the end of the day, we are responsible for taxpayer money, and we're responsible for, for finding a good superintendent for the kids, and if we are going to talk about him specifically, he did a very nice job here for a number of years, and he's well-respected. So, out of the three, I can feel confident with the Education Leadership Solutions, and I can look through the presentation in this folder, which is more than I can say for other ones.
Okay, Jim?
Okay. Kind of very similar, I would say. HYA, HYA seems to offer us pretty comparable to what everybody else was. I kind of agree with Anna, the national thing doesn't do much for me, because I'm not looking for somebody to move across country for us necessarily, so that's not really a selling point for me, per se, and it is a pretty hefty amount, more than what the other two are quoting, for what appears to be pretty comparable. So they're probably my last choice. I think I would probably go with EDLS, just because IASB can offer us a really low base rate, but it sounds like we're going to want to be using some of those optionals, which would get us right up there to about the same amount. So cost-wise, it's not so much of a matter of which one we go with. I do feel like both of, or like EDLS had two more connections to here than IASB does. We have somebody who would be on our team that, while not in our town, is very local to neighboring community and knows the area, similarities in the district, things along those lines. Plus with Don White, I think he's got a lot of history, he's got a lot of knowledge, and he's going to be the one that's poring over the stator, which is his huge MO, so I feel like that would be the better choice of those two for me.
Okay, ma'am? Is it Kelly? Me? I can go. I was supposed to drink a chocolate milk.
I want to go with the chocolate.
Eric, while you're chewing, I can just add, I will stall for you, and, and I hear you, and the nationwide gave me pause, which is another reason why I asked the question, and they are searching in two schools currently, and in contention in 11, so, you know, 135 associates plus the four, I, I don't think we lose the attention that we need. But I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I hear the direction folks are going, and, and I think we have two great choices in IASB and EDLS. I, there was a point that I wanted to make with the, and I didn't ask the question. Oh, no, wait, that was HYA, sorry. This is the problem what I get when I think out loud, but I, I don't think we can, can go wrong. I think IASB is ahead, in, if we were to put EDLS and IASB against each other, because they just have the, you know, decades of experience, and, and I feel like their, their reach is further than a newer firm, but again, I, I think both are fine choices, and I'm glad that we have such good choices.
Okay, I can go now. If you're done. Okay, so, the thing that concerns me about IASB is, on the base of it, they're the cheapest, $8,800. We know for a fact that focus groups are going to be huge for us, and at $1,500 per consor- consultant per day, I could see that doubling their fee instantly, because we're going to have a lot of stakeholders, whether it's staff, parents, taxpayers, administrators, and that's just what scares me, is because you get that low fee, and then all of a sudden you just start tacking things on, it's like that a la carte, right, menu, where like, "Oh, no big deal, the steak's only $50," but then you got this french fries for $15, and you got a salad for another $15, and you got a dessert, that's $15 for a piece of cake, and next thing you know, you're like, "Oh my gosh, I just spent over $100 for dinner, and I thought it was going to be a decent, you know, night." So that's what scares me about IASB. I think the other thing too with IASB, they got 20-some searches going on right now, if you look at their searches, they are special, specialists in downstate and middle of the state, western part of the state searches. I think what you get with these search firms is, they all touch on it, you get the network of superintendents that they have, and I think if we're looking at our next superintendent being a suburban district, do we want, you know, what's our candidate? What's our leadership profile? What's our candidate profile? And I just think that, you know, I'm just not sure that that's, you know, pulling from way down south, and I, I live, I grew up an hour south of here, so I'm, you know, actually I grew up in St. George, where Cognizance is superintendent, so. But HYA, I agree 100% that, I think that the, the national search component of that is not for us. I think it is when you get to Nutria High School. People aren't familiar with Nutria High School, that's two campuses in Oneckah, that's 5,000 students, North Shore, very wealthy district, and, you know, they can demand a national search, because they're going to pay someone probably close to $300,000 to get that job filled. You know, they had Elgin listed down there, that's the second largest school district in the state of Illinois, Elgin U-46, I believe is the name of it. So, I actually audited that district way back in the day when I was young, out of college, for a couple of years. It's insane, they got, you know, 50 schools, I think, in that district. They can do that, you know, that's, I think, you know, the national presence is a big district, maybe Yorkville is big enough where they can bring in a national presence, I just don't think it's there, so we're paying a premium, I think, for a service we're not going to use, potentially. I did like them as a firm, though, I said, I think what, you know, I was very impressed, I know some people are questioning, I, I think that, you know, we'd get a very good search out of them. I just don't know if we want national, and you're paying a premium for that. Now, the million-dollar question with them, if we're looking at cost, is they say they'd match if they do their level of service, so that's that big asterisk, right? Whenever you see like, "Hey, come to this bank, and we're going to open up a checking account, we'll give you $500," and they got a little asterisk next to it, and you got to do like, all of these things to do it, right? And you're like, "There's no way I'm going to be here to do this," and then you, you miss out on it. So, I just worry about that a little bit. The Educational Leadership Associates, obviously Don White, you know, was a rock star here. You know, I, I still, you know, he left a year early, I still feel to this day that, that he still feels guilty because he left us a year early. We fully understand the people that are here, why he did it, and I, I think that he's going to make sure that he do a good job. The thing that concerns me about EDLS, and I didn't catch this, so Kelly's question was good, I didn't realize that Cognizance and the other guy are still full-time employees. That scares me a little bit, in the sense that, you know, they got their own district to deal with, and then now they're going to do a search as well. That scares me a little bit, that they might be stretched too thin. So, so I'm kind of on the fence between EDLS and HYA, to be honest with you, at this point, and I just, I'm not sure at this, you know, if I have to. No, I'm going between HYA and EDLS. I, I just don't know, I, I can't make a decision right now on the two of them. At least I'm leaning towards those two, at this point in time. So I got like a 1A and a 1B.
I will go. Okay. I did not, HYA was very professional, I did like them. The only thing that I didn't care for was no paperwork. I like it in the paperwork, with presentations. And the coast-to-coast thing, they're, that's not a big thing, I don't have that. The coast-to-coast, I mean, coast-to-coast, national, whatever. I do like E- DLS, because I like the mentoring and the coaching, the two-year guarantee. I like that they only service Illinois. So my top choice is E- 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 O-S for that one.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, so, I think we're a little, I want to make sure we're all on the same page, looking at the same thing. As far as I can see, E- DLS and IASB basically are the same price for the additional, the add-ons for the stakeholder groups and focus groups, so it's $1,500 a pop, Eric, to your point, but it's for both of them, so the price goes up. So apples to apples, we're, E- DLS is 23% higher than IASB in cost. Anything in addition is $1,500, they're exactly the same, you know what I mean? Jim, you're shaking your head, what, what are you looking at?
IASB.
Mm-hmm.
It's a screen that's three optional items.
But one of those is training for the Board of Education, I don't think, you know, we're, we're not talking about that, we're just talking about going their base plus two stakeholders, which would be 3,000, which would, again, you know, 3,000 here, plus 3,000 here, you're still looking at 20, 23% more for ELS.
Let's not break it into segments, just because of the hundred. Let's talk about what we're really talking about, 1,500, two grand, let's put a real number on what we're talking about.
It's 11,400 for IASB, 13,400 for EDLS, and then if it matches, 13,400, so, say, if we pick, I'm sorry, EDLS, thank you. Sorry, Eric, go ahead.
No, I, I disagree with that man, respectfully. So, I think what I heard was that EDLS would charge us $1,500 per consultant, regardless of the amount of meetings that we had, so that'd be $3,000 total. What IASB said, and I wrote this down, maybe I got it wrong, they said $1,500 per consultant per day. So, so, so I, so I'm going to, I would bet, I'd bet that it's not even going to be 4,500, I think that's going to be close to 6,000, because I can see them bringing two consultants out here, possibly for four days, because they also said $1,500 for focus groups extra at the front end, and they had focus groups at the back end, right? So to develop the profile, they were going to do focus groups at $1,500 per consultant, so let's just talk that up to 3,000 on that. So that's where I'm getting 6,000, and then all of a sudden you get 6,000 plus the base of 84, and you get 14,000, which is more than the 13,000 number, I think, that Jim tossed out for educational leadership, right? Because they have the 9,000, or 10,400 base, plus another 3,000, so 13,400 versus, I could see four, an extra thousand for IASB, pretty easily, just based on the amount of focus groups that I think that we're going to need. But, that's, that's the math that I'm coming up with in my head, that, and I think even 6,000 might be short, and that might be 7,500 if we had to get a fifth, you know, I, I just don't know how many consultants they're going to bring out, and I just don't know if they can do it all in one day. But... That's right, I, I just think that the IASB thing is just going to, could potentially get really high. I agree, I don't know if we need to practice interviewing, I think that's an optional step to save money, that we can probably get out of there, especially, you know, I mean, we did interviews for the interims, they can help us with questions, I don't think necessarily, you know, the first time we're going to interview them is when it's down to six, so they're going to do a lot of the heavy vetting in front of it, we don't need to be expert interviewers, I guess, so. But anyways, alright, I think, back to Kelly, because you, you were going in your...
Okay, so I, I think, you know, we all interpret things differently. It, one says 1,500 per day per consultant, the other one says 1,500 per consultant. I wrote down, you know, I mean, I think it's, it's comparable, the amount of time each one will spend, and how many consultants, I don't see it being vastly different, depending on what firm, they're the same price. And, and I think this just points to, this is what the industry says, right? That's why you see this consistency. Regardless, I want to talk about the, the pros and cons that I see from, from each of them. So IASB, I really like their reach, you know, I spoke briefly, Anna and I did, with, with Steve on Friday, and, you know, one of the things, Steve, hopefully you're okay, I mentioned this, that, you know, you're, you're routinely getting emails on, on searches and their, their job openings, and, and Dr. Carmen said, you know, that, that reaches, is 7,000 is the number she used, so that certainly is a further reach, I think, than any of the other firms. The other thing is, I, I don't agree that they're only the southern part of the state. Dr. Carmen said her territory is, you know, this area, and as we know, we have many IASB, you know, consultants serving us in this, have been, so to say that their focus is downstate, I don't think is, is fair. And then, I like how IASB approached, from the, from the perspective of a school board member versus a superintendent. I think we need people that understand, and I, commonality from the, from a perspective. Those are the, and I, and I like the price, and, and I, I appreciate that Dr. Carmen, this is her full-time job, and with their, the experience, the years, the contacts, the network, all of it is there, no question. And, and for her to be a president, I think is very valuable, look at that as a huge benefit to the district, knowing that she is the former state superintendent. The HYA, I don't want to focus too much on them, because I, I am not a proponent of moving forward with them, so I'm just going to skip over them. I think there were strengths and weaknesses, but, anyway. With the executive leadership solutions, I'm deeply concerned about having consultants have full-time jobs as superintendents. We know the requirements of a superintendent, their districts are bigger than ours, I have major concerns about their availability and bandwidth to service us in the same way as Dr. Carmen can with IASB. So that's point number one. Point number two is, again, from the perspective point, they're coming in the superintendent seat, and I would like, I would prefer the board member seat. So, that's another thing. And then the third thing is, you know, to Julie's point, certainly, clearly, there are many personal relationships that exist with Don White, who has a stake in this firm, and that can be construed as a positive thing. I do not believe in this, that is a positive. I would appreciate a fresh, fresh set of eyes on our district, I would appreciate, you know, I, one of the things Carmen kept saying was, she's removing the bias, she's making sure that the stakeholder groups are represented equally. Byst came up a number of times in her presentation, and I really appreciate that, and I think that's what Mokina needs right now, is anti-bias, so I would argue that going with somebody we have personal relationships with, to Julie's point, is not optics that we want, and we should just stay with objective, tried and true association, are, we are members of this association, we have the state superintendent, former state superintendent that's going to personally conduct the search for us, clearly she is trained and capable, it's her full-time job, and their price is, in my opinion, lower than any other one, but I guess that's up for interpretation.
Are you on IASB as your choice?
Eric, can I make a suggestion, and this may not be a popular one, because I know how important it is to, to move forward? Would it be valuable to ensure that we understand the IASB pricing, to make sure that we're doing an apples-to-apples? If there's, what her thoughts are, how many focus groups, and how many people? I, I do agree with you, it's not going to be one day with two people, there's too many focus groups that, that at least I believe we need to have. I don't know if everyone agrees how many we, we need, but I'd hate to have a choice skewed by, by misunderstanding a price and, and thoughts on an important part of the search. Would it be all right with the group if we go back and, and make sure we understand that piece properly? I do read it as, you're absolutely right, $1,500 per day per person, and...
And both. Let's be clear, it's on both. On a sheet, yeah, on a sheet. It's both of the, both of the items, the optional... The optional, sorry, the optional, IASB consultant conducts in-staffed and community interviews to supplement survey results, additional costs, $1,500 per day per consultant. You think that's $1,500, that's a flat fee, but we said we're not interested in that. District stakeholder group interviews with semifinal candidates, additional costs, $1,500 per day per consultant. So it is both, you know, and that's clear as day. What's not clear as day is how many consultants they would bring and how many days that they would need. But you gotta think, you, what?
I thought it was pretty clear for-
It was clear, it was clear for, educational leadership said it's $1,500, no matter how many we do. You're paying $1,500 for Dr. Colleen Neese, and you're paying $1,500 for Dr. Bart-
Bartel?
Bart, Bart, Bartel.
John, he even said, just call me John.
Bartel.
Yes, John. They, I think they clearly said, I don't know.
I wrote it down. I know I ran right.
No matter how many-
But you may remember, I asked him a question directly, because I think the focus groups are gonna be huge for us. I asked him, how many people do we really need? Would it just be the two of you, et cetera? I said, be the two of them. I did write down, would focus groups of 1,500 per consultant, would you be the two of them?
So not that it is-
Why include that number?
Blinding proof, but I did write down quite a bit of notes from everybody, if that helps at all. But when Carmen, when Dr. Carmen was talking about the focus groups, my exact writing right here is $1,500 per each day per consultant suggests three minimum. So she, if I'm recalling correctly, based off of my notes and what she said, I'm pretty sure she had said, we have three schools, we have many groups, she would assume a three suggestion. And EDLS had said, as Jim just said, I remember that very clearly, that they would suggest it would be both of them as the consultants doing it, over multiple days or groups or whatever, but it would be the both of them doing it. So we would be looking at $1,500 each, $3,000 to do as many focus groups as we needed. So that, again, not blinding proof, but I wrote down then, when I did my quick calculations of ranges of what this could cost, I wrote the $8,400 for IASB, plus $4,500 in parentheses, three groups, equals 12.9 as my base for IASB. That's how I got to that math.
Say three consultants for three days?
Three groups is what I wrote.
Right, community, staff-
Multiple days, it could be, but either three groups was her suggestion. So that's why I figured it would be minimum, which is gonna be that 4,500, and then that can only go up.
That assumes one group each day. You know, I'm just saying, for IASB, we just don't know what her suggestion would be, so. Right, we just don't know.
Fifty-two consultants per group, and now we're talking about six to start.
Right.
Well, to me, it sounds like, to me, it's like roughly about an hour, kind of thing. But all of a sudden, you know, getting these scheduled, the idea that they could get multiple at the time, oh, that's entirely dependent on-
Thing I didn't like about HYA, though, when I asked that question, about the focus groups, I asked, you know, we said, hey, I use the example of 200 people. He had mentioned, oh yeah, we'll put them in groups of 50 in 45 minutes. I'm like, that doesn't give anyone, like, that gives them like 30 seconds to talk. Like, I'm not sure, you know, anyone can really say what they want to in 30 seconds. That seems a little odd to me, that they would just do, you know, 50 people in a focus group and expect it done in 45 minutes. I thought that was odd. I don't know if anyone else caught that, but I was just kinda like-
Or insert more into factor of online surveys, focus groups, or full members.
Yeah, I mean, that might facilitate some of it, too. I just thought it was odd that 50 people, before I just did the math, and I'm like, wow, okay, talk fast, people.
Well, it seemed like all the firms had a survey as part of their deal, which is to everybody, and then separate from that is the focus group with different questions. So I think that was consistent amongst all three.
Sorry, my mic's not on. So for the four people that, you know, suggested EDLS, my major concern, help me out here, is that, you know, both of our consultants, dedicated consultants, have full-time jobs as superintendents. My concern is, you know, how are they gonna run both? But, you know, the four people that voted for them are comfortable with that. So I'm just, help me get comfortable.
My thinking is, we're hiring them, they are promising to take care of us, and so it's their problem to deal their job as full-time superintendents, and then come help us by superintendents. And if they can't hold to what they're offering us, I don't think they would be offering that. And if they don't put up what they're saying, then we need to hold them accountable for it.
Eric, if I can add, you know, I think what helps is that I also don't think that the focus groups and the bulk of the work will be done during the day. I think the bulk of the work will be done in the evening. I know I was a proponent of HYA, but I also, like I said, I liked all of the candidates. It's wonderful to have three good ones to choose from. So I think, given that the bulk of the work will be done on off-hours, I know that superintendents would disagree that there are off-hours sometimes, but I do think that that gives me some comfort with knowing that.
Would agree with all of that. This obviously is not my full-time job, since I don't get paid for it. But I have a full-time job that I'm at all day long, and all of my board stuff, most of my board stuff is happening outside of those hours. As Julie said, most of these focus groups and things like that will be happening with our stakeholders, who also have full-time jobs, most of them. So them having something that they have to do during the day, or maybe even be able to slip some stuff in during the day, but most of it happening at night is not scary to me at all, because that's where most of our stuff is happening also. In addition to that, assuming, I'm gonna make stuff up here and say, half of the people that apply for this already have a job right now, also. So they also are going to be asking to talk with whoever they have to talk to outside of their working hours. So it makes a lot of sense to me that almost none of this will be happening during daytime, just to begin with, whether these guys have a day job or not. My guess is most of their work would be happening at night, regardless of which firm we pick.
Thank you, that's helpful. Any other discussion?
No, I think I'm good. I guess the only thing, to say that they have full-time jobs, and to say the work happens at night, is not really necessarily the problem, right? It's that we're looking at people that do this as their full-time job, and are devoted as their full-time job, versus people that are not. And I do agree that the work would happen in the evening, but it's still not their full-time job. And they still have another full-time job, which is beyond full-time, as we all know, in the role of a superintendent of large districts. So I'm not positive that the timing of our focus groups necessarily is reason enough to not have that a point of consideration still.
All right, any other discussion? Do we, how do you wanna handle this? We have an action item to vote tonight, if we want. That was put on there specifically, because if you don't put it on the agenda, you can't vote. You can easily table it, if you feel comfortable making a decision tonight. I think Julie Oss proposed pausing potentially, so we can get some questions out to IASB. Did I hear you correctly on that? You proposed potentially-
For the next Mokina School District 159 Superintendent, who will take office on July 1, 2025.
Hi.
Hey.
Hey, all right, I wasn't expecting, well-
How you like that?
I took a drink of Coke, wow, man.
What's in my water bottle, huh?
Yeah, what's in that water bottle? Man, is it some Red Bull, maybe?
It is water.
Okay, well, all right, we have first, and we have second. Did you get that down? I'm sorry, Kelly, I didn't have you ready to go, my apologies. All right, well, we had first, second, do we have any further discussion on that? Okay, I guess, let's call the vote.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zilinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. I will contact all three firms tomorrow with that, so we can get started. At least we can get the calendar started. I think they all had a projected calendar, so we'll go with that. All right, I move that the Board of Education adjourn open session. Back to Julie, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zilinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Okay, motion passed, thank you.